The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Basley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Coder, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicero, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruisin, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Basley, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderwoman Cruisin. We have seventeen present and we have a quorum.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend John Watson. I'd like everyone to stand for prayer. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, we realize that we're all too imperfect and that we have offended you. Yet, we believe that you are with us, loving us with a love that never let us go and never let us down. In your love we learn, through your love we find light for our day. Empower us to be our loving best as we face the task of this day. Into your hands we commit ourselves, our family, and our community. Amen. Really appreciate Reverend coming down and doing prayer for us on Fridays. Spending our regular order of business, taking our courtesy resolution calendar, I move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar, second about Alderman from the twenty-second. Alderman from the fourth, I'd like to approach to dieus for the presentation of resolution. Can we have some more order?
Good morning. Good morning. It gives me great pleasure to present this honorarium to a noteworthy person in the Bible that says, as you, some people are worthy of a double honor, and this gentleman that I'm bringing before you today makes city government what it is. He tries to make it better for us all, and he works very hard in my ward and throughout the city, he's had several city positions. Would I could bring Jim Buchanan and his family up this morning? I have my singing voice, so be careful, I might sing this morning. Jim, bring your family with you, all your guests. Everyone that's a guest of Jim Buchanan, please come forward. Jim works for the city of St. Louis. He's my commercial district manager, putting together all my businesses and making sure that the facade program goes well. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the resolution for me, please?
Whereas retired Sergeant James H. Buchanan, Jr., began his professional career as an officer in April of nineteen sixty-five, when he joined the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department as a probationary patrolman, and whereas Officer Buchanan served a short period as an undercover officer assigned to the liquor morality section of the Bureau of Investigation before being assigned to the historic Eighth Police District Police Station located at Deer Street and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, before being later transferred to Seventh Police District, and whereas he was transferred in nineteen seventy-six to the Personnel Section, where he served as a St. Louis police recruiter, he was promoted to Sergeant in nineteen seventy-nine, he went on to work in the Safe Streets Program, and also served in the Fifth, Seventh, and Ninth Districts, and was briefly assigned to the Mayor's Office, and whereas he was one of the founders of the St. Louis Ethical Police Society, now known as the Ethical Society of Police, along with fifteen brave and progressive African-American officers who sought to challenge racial discrimination, and whereas he earned an Associate of Law degree from Forest Park Community College, a Bachelor of Science degree from the University of Missouri-St. Louis, and advanced training from Northwestern University, and whereas, after he retired from the Police Department in nineteen eighty-eight, he served as the Assistant Executive Director of the Eighth Police District Black History and Cultural Enrichment Program. He went on to serve for eighteen months as Chief of Police for the Page Dale Police Department, and then later as the Assistant Executive Director of the St. Louis Equal Housing Opportunity Council, and whereas, in March nineteen ninety-three, Sergeant Buchanan became a Special Executive Assistant to Mayor Freeman Basley, Jr. In nineteen ninety-seven, Sergeant Buchanan joined the St. Louis Development Corporation, where he currently serves as a Commercial District Manager, responsible for assisting with economic development within the city of St. Louis, and whereas Sergeant Buchanan is a proud son of the historic Lewis Place neighborhood, attended Washington Elementary Grade School, graduated from Charles Sumner High School, along with the world-renowned tennis champion Arthur Ashe, and whereas we too infrequently pause to recognize the men and women who have quietly worked for the city of St. Louis for years, and Sergeant Buchanan's forty-five years of service to our region is worthy of our thanks. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize retired Sergeant James H. Buchanan, Jr.'s many years of service to our city and region. We further direct the Clerk of this Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings, and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Let's give Jim a round of applause. You can see that this gentleman is all over the spectrum. He is a noteworthy person that we need to seek out those in city government that are exceptional and do and act the call above and beyond duty. And this is one of the gentlemen that I've picked out. I'm going to continue to seek out those that make city government work. And anyone would like to have their name added to the resolution, please let the Clerk know. Jim, it gives me honor to present to you the highest honor that can be bestowed upon any individual in the city of St. Louis, and you are well-deserving of this honor. We appreciate you, and thank you very much for keeping the Fourth Ward intact. God bless.
To Mr. President, honored members of the Board of Aldermen, and especially to Alderman Sam Moore, I would like to say thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Very briefly, I want to say that it's been an honor to serve, because it is the service that we do that counts in a life. I recall Dr. King saying that he did not want to be remembered as having a PhD or having a Nobel Peace Prize, but he said he just wanted to be able to say that he would help somebody and that his living was not in vain. In closing, I would like to say that I'd like to part something that I learned from my forty-five years of service as a civil service of the city of St. Louis, and that is that we have a great responsibility, and so much of what happens to our city occurs right here in this august body, that we find that sometimes a failing school system is not necessarily all the responsibility of the school, but starts off in our community with the failing community. We find out that criminals are just not bad people, but sometimes people with the lack of being able to have certain opportunities that drives them to crime. We also find out that sometimes we get so involved in our jobs and going along with protocol that we resent sometimes being told that we might be on the wrong direction. I'd like to just talk about the thirtieth anniversary of the Space Challenger disaster. There was an engineer on that project, his name was Bob Ebling, and he told the engineers that the temperature that was going to be below the degree that had been tested for the rubber seals that would keep those astronauts safe was going to explode. They told Mr. Ebling to go back to his engineering station, to shut up, and don't say a further word. He went home and told his wife, "That Challenger is going to explode." Thirty years later, he said he had to relieve his conscience and tell the world that he was ignored when he told the people the truth about what was going to happen. I say to us that we live in very, very dangerous times today, and we have to listen carefully to the cries of our community, and if we do not listen to the spiritual cries of our community, we are headed for disaster. But the one thing about St. Louis is that we do have the ability and the track record of making a difference. And so I'd like to say thank you so much, and my prayer is that God continue to bless the city of St. Louis, Missouri. Thank you so much.
Alderman from the eighteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. There are individuals who we come across who have been pushed to serve. There are other individuals who serve on their own for our community. And then there are those rare and exceptional individuals whose life is an expression of service. Mr. Buchanan is one of those individuals, whose very life essence is an expression of service. He gives of himself tirelessly, he has lots of ideas constantly, he looks at and analyzes what's going on, and then attempts to try to provide solutions, and not just talk about solutions, but to put his backbone, his energy to solving them. A rare individual and a gift to this city. Congratulations on this commemoration.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the eighteenth, would you like to make a motion to have this resolution in bank?
I've already told the sponsor I'd like to do that. I would move that the resolution be in bank.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the eighteenth, second about Alderman from the twenty-sixth, the nineteenth, the tenth, the twentieth, everybody. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. What that means is that every Alderman has asked that their name be added to the resolution. So the Sergeant at Arms will prepare another copy of this resolution, hopefully, you know, prior to you leaving, to add every Alderman to that resolution. Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. James Buchanan. Let's go back down memory lane for just a minute. You see, he was a great police officer, just great. And then he got involved with the Ethical Society, and he brought together folks who said, "You know, we gotta be about something, we gotta look at stuff, we gotta make sure things are done right, and that we are treated right." But you know, James has that Milton side to him sometimes, you gotta pull him back, pull him back, but it's okay, it's really okay. But what I truly want to say to you is I appreciate you serving with me in the Nineteenth Ward. Our commercial facade program there was very successful, that's because of you. And you have many friends there, you have many friends all over the city, and I see myself as a friend. You and your lovely wife are an example of what I would like to see the young people grow up and understand about having commitments, and so I wish you the best. I know you'll be involved in something very exciting, you're not gonna sit down. Thank you, James Buchanan.
Thank you very much. They asked me if I'm going to retire, and I said, "You know, there is a retirement, they call it death, but as long as I'm breathing, I'm still gonna be working."
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Also want to say thanks for all your years of service. You know, you think? Alderman from twenty-seven? No, go ahead, Alderman.
Well, no, I just wanted to thank Brother James for, you know, for helping me when I first became Alderman. I was confused on the facade program, and so he took time out of his schedule to spend extra time in the Twenty-seventh Ward, to assist me and to teach me different things about that program, and he's been a long, a long friend, a longtime friend of my family. So just wanted to thank you for everything that you've done, and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you so much, Alderman.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Again, James, I want to, you know, thank you on behalf of my family and friends and people who couldn't be here to thank you personally today. I want to thank you for doing a great job on behalf of the citizens of the city of St. Louis that are far-reaching beyond just the boundaries of our city. I also want to thank you and your wife for being great role models for some of these young kids to look up to. You talked about, during your speech, you talked about people being criminals and only because of lack of opportunity, lack of opportunity, but also it's important for them to see those positive role models, see someone that looks like them, someone that comes from where they came from, succeeding and making it happen, and I cannot thank you enough for being that role model. As my neighbor, I know my sons and my daughters both, you know, look up to you guys, and I cannot thank you for continuing to be good, positive role models. You've done a phenomenal job in the city of St. Louis, and we have benefited from it. Enjoy your retirement, although we're not gonna let you retire. Sam has already said that. Sam's giving me a mean eye just even saying it. But in closing, as Sam said, this resolution is the highest honor anyone has, the Board has to give any individual or organization. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when you research the records of the city of St. Louis, they'll find your name permanently affixed to those records, and know that you've passed this way and you made such a contribution that we pause in our deliberations today to recognize you. We are also now will have our Sergeant at Arms create a Wikipedia page so that it connects it all, so people can find you and understand how much you mean to the city of St. Louis. Congratulations again on a job well done. Let's give them a big round of applause and thank you for it.
Before we leave today, I don't want to rain on Jim's parade, but the Board of Education is here to discuss a matter with us, and they have bought us lunch, so all the Aldermen can stay after this session to hear what the Board of Aldermen has to the Board of Election, the Board of Education, all the Boards have to say to us.
It's been moved in second, that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. That will return our regular order of business. Introduction, round of guests, any introduction, round of guests. Alderman from the fourteenth?
Good morning, President Reed. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Richard Gaines from the St. Louis Board of Education. And I'm not sure if Dr. Adams is here yet, but I'd also like to recognize him. Richard Gaines has served on the Board of Education two terms in two different eras. So I am particularly close to him in my tenure with St. Louis Board of Education, and I'd like to recognize him and invite him to stay afterwards to present to us. Thank you. I'd also, okay, I'd also like to introduce Firefighters Local Seventy-three, Demetrius Al Alfred. Okay, and Laborers International Local One Ten, Clinton McBride, and Painters Local Fifty-eight, Representative Gary Otten.
Alderman from the third?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest Latisha Frazier Basley, who put together the Third Ward Organization for Young People over there. That's one reason why Third Ward has flourished so.
Oh, yeah. Let's give her a round of applause. Alderman from the seventh?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, Mr. Malone and the Civics Class from Lift for Life Academy, a charter school down in Soulard, if you could all stand up. Thank you all for being here today. I'd also like to have as my special guest my friend Dave Rudolph, Fourth District Detective and member of the St. Louis Police Officers Association. And last but not least, and last but certainly not least, my dear friend, former colleague, often adversary on the golf course, Tim Boyer from the Circuit Attorney's Office, White Collar Crime and Fraud and Corruption Unit.
Alderman from twenty-second, yeah?
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have my special guests, Mr. Leroy Grant and Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T.
Alderman from the ninth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Martina Johnson, St. Louis Association of Realtors.
Alderman from the eleventh?
Good morning, Mr. President. Mr. President, my special guest is my next-door neighbor who pioneered an alpaca farm before it was legal in his backyard. He lives right next door to me, and I, it is now a problem property. I call the police on him fairly regularly. The Honorable Jake Hummel took my place in the Missouri General Assembly, and he is currently serving as the House Minority Leader, has very few Democrats to work with, but I think he does a truly outstanding job, and he's a fine young man, and I'm happy to have him down here this morning.
Jake, thanks for all your service up at the Capitol. I know it's a tough job. We really appreciate all the work that you do. Alderman from the twenty-seventh?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest Twenty-seventh Ward Resident Mary Jefferson, Stephanie Robinson from Amarin, and former Twenty-seventh Ward Alderman and Comptroller, Vervis Jones.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth, welcome back, too. Looking good.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Alderman Twenty-seventh stole my guest. So when you come this way, Mr. President, you know you gotta stop. I'd like to introduce as my special guest the former comptroller, Vervis Jones, resident Twenty-sixth Ward. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest Gary Otten from the Painters, and I probably don't see everybody over there, Fred Sears, Jr., and Mike Grady, both from the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters.
Alderwoman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest Judge Derek Reed, who is a judge in Kentucky, and also was a law school class read of, classmate of mine. I want to also welcome back the Alderman from the twenty-sixth and make him my special guest. I know he had some especially painful surgery, it's good to have him back. And I also want to make my special guest the Fifteenth Ward Alderwoman, Megan Green.
Alderwoman from the fifth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest Richard K. Gaines. He's a Fifth Ward Business Owner, close friend of the family, very interested in our St. Louis public school system, and he's my honored guest today. Thank you.
Any further, Alderwoman from the sixteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guest today Anthony Lancia with AGC, and Gina Hackenworth with Amarin.
Any further introductions, any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, I'd like to wrap this up.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to break up this little huddle. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, as we are gathered here on February twenty-sixth, which in eighteen twenty-nine, Mr. Levi Strauss was born, without whom we would have no blue jeans. And in nineteen twenty-eight, Mr. Fats Domino was born, without whom we would have no thrill on Blueberry Hill. But most importantly, this is Pistachio Day, where we celebrate everything about nuts. On that note, I would like to introduce the Alderman from the twenty-third. Thank you.
We also have with us Bob Wood. Bob, could you stand? Thank you for joining us today. Bob Wood has been very active, developer all over town, so thank you so much for joining us today. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for approval of the February twelfth minutes.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the eighteenth, second about Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials?
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes. I have from His Honor, the Mayor, the following correspondence. "February twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, Dear Members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Locust Business District. The appointment of Mr. Jared Opsel, who resides in the Fifth Ward and whose term will expire on January first, two thousand twenty. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay."
Alderwoman from the sixth, you recognize on the Mayor's appointment to the Locust Business District?
We move this bill to the Rules Committee?
All right. Mr. Clerk, please send Locust Business District to the Rules Committee.
So noted. "February twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, Dear Members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Waterman Lake Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. Eric Weber, who resides in the Twenty-eighth Ward and whose term will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay."
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the Mayor's appointment to the Waterman Lake Special Business District?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Eric Weber to the Waterman Lake SPD.
Then moved by the Alderman from the twenty-eighth, second about Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of reports of city officials.
We dispense with line items seven and eight. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items nine through ten. Alderwoman from the nineteenth? Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was standing because I had a little bit of confusion in my mind. I didn't know that we could take a meral appointment and put it in a committee.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, so...
We've done that numerous times.
Okay, so that was my confusion. I needed to get it cleared up.
Okay, thanks, Alderman.
I thought that was a mayor's privilege. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Alderman. With dispensal line item, again, with dispensal line items seven through ten, first reading of Board bills?
Board Bill Three Twenty-One, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, in ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for Nathaniel Rivers Place, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Twenty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Coder, in ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for Seven Oh Five Olive Street, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Twenty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Coder, in ordinance approving the petition of an owner... the petition of an owner of certain real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing the seven oh five Olive Community Improvement District, and containing an emergency clause and containing a severability clause. Board Bill three twenty-four, sponsored by Alderman Cotter, in ordinance authorizing the execution of a cooperation agreement and authorizing reimbursement in accordance therewith and containing a severability clause. That is the extent of first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill three twenty-one. To the na, to the Housing, Urban Development, and Zoning Committee, Board Bills three twenty-two, three twenty-three, and three twenty-four. That is the extent of reference of bills to committees.
Second reading.
The Neighborhood Development Committee reported the following bills out of the committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill two eighty-six, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-one thirty-nine Ohio. Board Bill two eighty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for three thirty-hundred and to thirty-oh-four Texas. Board Bill two eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-eight thirteen to twenty-eight fifteen South Eighteenth Street. Board Bill two eighty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-eight sixty-two Wisconsin. Board Bill two ninety-one, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-two hundred Cleveland. Board Bill two ninety-two, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-oh-three Russell. Board Bill two ninety-three, sponsored by Alderman Ort, Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for eighteen seventeen Alfred. Board Bill three oh-one, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-three oh eight to forty-three ten Swan. Board Bill three oh-two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-one oh one Leclite Avenue. Board Bill three twelve, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for eighteen seventeen Lynch. Board Bill thirty-one six, excuse me, Board Bill three sixteen Committee Sub, sponsored by Alderwoman Crusen, in ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for sixty-one oh five Delmar and containing a severability clause. The Housing, Urban Development, and Zoning Committee reported the following bills out of committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill two thirty-six, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance approving the development plan for the, for the six thirty-four North Grand, three fifty-three redevelopment area submitted by the six thirty-four Redevelopment Corporation, confirming the finding that the area is a blighted area, providing for tax abatement and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two thirty-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance finding and declaring that there exists in the city a certain blighted area, City Block ten sixty-one, at the intersection of Grand and Samuel Shepherd Drive. Board Bill two seventy-five, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-five hundred and forty-five ten Delmar. Board Bill three oh-three, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, in ordinance amending ordinance sixty-eight nine fifty-nine by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement for the fifteen thirty-eight, fifteen forty, fifteen sixty-two, and fifteen sixty-four Fairmont Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill three fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance to amend Section eleven point oh six point three seventy of the Revised Code, being ordinance fifty-one four four six, by repealing Section eleven point oh six point three seventy of the Revised Code and enacting in lieu thereof a new section to be known as Section eleven point oh six point three seventy of the Revised Code, related to the tax abatement procedures of the land clearance for redevelopment authority and planned industrial expansion authority. Board Bill three seventeen, sponsored by Alderwoman Crusen, in ordinance dissolving special allocation fund for the Delmar Loop North redevelopment area and terminating the designation of a certain respective portion of the city relating to a redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto and containing a severability clause. The Ways and Means Committee reported the following bills out of committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill two oh-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingraccia, in ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor and Comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of three thousand dollars and other good and valuable consideration, a quitclaim deed to remise, release, and forever quitclaim unto Vicki Place Incorporated, certain city-owned property located in City Block twelve sixty, which property is known by address of twenty-eight oh five Hickory Street. Board Bill three fourteen, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor and Comptroller to purchase and acquire real property and improvements commonly known as twelve twelve to twelve eighteen and fourteen oh one Central Industrial Drive from Green Street Central Industrial Drive. The total purchase price for the property, including seller-provided improvements, shall not exceed eleven million four hundred thousand dollars.
There's some order.
Board Bill three eighteen, sponsored by Alderwoman, Alderman Conway, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell its leasehold revenue bonds, refuse facility, and municipal garage projects, Series twenty sixteen, in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed thirteen million dollars, in order to finance or refinance, one, a portion of the cost of the acquisition of certain real property and improvements located at twelve fourteen to twelve eighteen Central Industrial Drive, and, two, a portion of the cost of the repair, construction, renovation, improvement, and equipping of a municipal garage located at eleven twenty-two Clark and containing an emergency clause. The Public Safety Committee reported the following bill out of committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill two ninety-six, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Ingraccia, Alderman Cone, Alderwoman Spencer, and Alderwoman Green, in ordinance revising and amending Title ten, Chapter ten point twenty of the Revised Code and the underlying ordinances, including the repealing or revision of portions of ordinances sixty-two nine forty-one, sixty-eight four sixty-three, sixty-two eight fifty-three, forty-seven eight eighty-three, and forty-two three thirty-three, dealing with the raising and keeping of certain animals to increase the number of chickens that can be kept on a parcel, to allow for the keeping of sheep, goats, and rat-type birds, and containing a severability clause. That is the extent of second readings.
Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill two fifty-three, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingraccia, in ordinance to amend ordinance fifty-eight seven twenty-eight, as amended by ordinance fifty-nine two forty-eight, and as amended by ordinance number sixty-five thirty, and as amended by ordinance sixty-five one thirty-three, enlarging the boundaries thereof, and as amended by ordinance sixty-six seven sixty-seven relating to the Locust Central Business District, a special business district, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two seventy-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Crusen, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to thirteen million seven hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars of excess monies that the city, the owner and operator of Lambert, intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two sixty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate public surface rights for travel in an irregular portion of Children's Place west of Taylor. Board Bill two sixty-two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service vacating a portion of air rights for an irregular portion of Children's Place west of Taylor. Board Bill two sixty-three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service vacating a portion of air rights for a fifteen-foot section of Taylor south of Children's Place. Board Bill two sixty-four, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on a five-foot by ten-foot section of sidewalk on Children's Place west of Taylor. Board Bill two eighty-five, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Ortman, Cotter, Howard, Davis, Villa, Arnowitz, French, Moore, Carter, and Ingraccia, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service establishing a public works project for the Traffic Management Enhancements Phase Three, which improves upon the means for the city to manage traffic and safety within the transportation network, including the establishment of a new real-time transportation intelligence center located at nineteen fifteen Olive and containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill two eighty-two, sponsored by Alderwomen Ingraccia and Crusen, in ordinance repealing ordinance seventy one sixty-six, which authorized the city to enter into a financing agreement with the Regional Convention and Sports Complex Authority that would have used public monies to help fund the construction of a new professional sports facility and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of board bills for perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth. Recognize a motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the sixth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Dispense with line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bill two seventy-nine, as amended. Board Bill two eighty-one. Board Bill two eighty-three. Board Bill two ninety-seven. Board Bill two ninety-eight. And Board Bill three oh-four. This is the extent of the third reading consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderman Cotter. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crusen. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Conway. Alderman Arnowitz. We have twenty-five ayes and zero noes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
Thank you.
Dispense with line item eighteen, report of enrollment committee.
The Enrollment Committee has reported out two seventy-nine, as amended. Board Bill two eighty-one. Board Bill two eighty-three. Board Bill two ninety-seven. Board Bill two ninety-eight. And Board Bill three oh eight four. That is the extent of the report of the Enrollment Committee.
All other business being suspended, the President shall an open session fix this signature heretofu to the end that these may become law.
Resolution two oh seven, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Kennedy, President Reed, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, and Alderman Carter, calling on the Engrossment, Rules, Resolutions, and Credentials Committee to hold hearings to discuss the merits and possible development of a racial equity lens approach, structure, and/or process of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number two oh seven.
Mr. President, Mr. President, members of the board, would you send that to the Rules Committee?
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth that we send resolution number two oh seven to Rules Committee and entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Mr. Clerk, please assign resolution number two oh seven to Rules.
So noted. There's been a request to pull resolution two oh four.
All right. Two oh four has been pulled at the request of sponsor.
That is the extent of our first readings of resolutions.
Second reading.
The Housing, Urban Development, and Zoning Committee reported the following resolution out of committee with a due pass recommendation. Resolution one ninety-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, a resolution recommended by the St. Louis Development Corporation approving a ten-year tax abatement for the property at one forty-six President Street, which is within an enhanced enterprise zone pursuant to ordinance sixty-seven three fifty.
Alderwoman from the twentieth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution number one ninety-three.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that we adopt, for adoption of resolution one ninety-three.
Moved by Alderwoman from the twentieth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the third. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. It's the end of the second reading resolution calendar.
That is the extent of the second reading, second readings for today.
Miss Lanza, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
On Monday, February twenty-ninth, we have a Use of Force Subcommittee Meeting at ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Professor David A. Klingler of the University of Missouri-St. Louis will give the committee an update on his latest research into the use of force by law enforcement. On Tuesday, March first, we have a Parks and Environment meeting at one p.m. in the Leisure Room. Board Bill three oh eight is on the agenda. Wednesday, March second, we have no meetings. Thursday, we have a public safety meeting scheduled for nine a.m. in the Kennedy Room. On the agenda is Board Bill two eighty and Board Bill three ten, and also scheduled is an update from Chief Dotson on the Pilot Body Cam program in the Real-Time Crime Center. At one p.m. on Thursday, March third, we have a Streets, Traffic, and Refuge meeting scheduled in the Leisure Room. On that agenda are Board Bills one thirty-seven, two seventy, two seventy-one, two eighty-four, three thirteen, and three nineteen, as well as Board Bill three twenty. On Friday, March, March fourth, we have a full board meeting scheduled for ten a.m. in chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to note the unfortunate passing of my friend and many of our friend in the room, Mike Murray, which happened this week. As many people know, Mike was a member of the Forest Park Advisory Board. He was involved in Forest Park Forever. He was on the Great Rivers Greenway Board, and Mike was a, Mike was a real gentleman and a real lover and enjoyer of the city of St. Louis. He spent time in the Peace Corps and came back to St. Louis and contributed a lot over the last twenty or thirty years. Mike was involved in a lot of the decision-making to create a lot of the amenities that we all enjoy in St. Louis, and he was also, I initially, I originally met Mike through bike racing because Mike was an accomplished racer, and he was in charge of the Midwest region for competitive bike racing. I was his bike mechanic for a little bit, and back in maybe two thousand three or four, I was, I was burnt out on the whole thing, and Mike was in the shop, and I said, Mike, when, when do I know that it's, it's time to quit doing this? And Mike said, you know, I really don't know. If it's not, if it's not fun for you, you should stop. And I thought about that, and it was good advice. I realized it still was fun. I'm still racing, and I think Mike kind of applied that ethos to his life. He contributed a lot right up to the end, and I just wanted to, just wanted to make note that he's a guy that contributed a lot, and I think we could all, what stands out to me now, really, especially as Mike's demeanor, he was just always a classy individual, and even if you had a disagreement, he was never ill-tempered or ill-mannered with anybody. So I really admire him. I think he lived an example that a lot of us can admire, and I hope we spare a thought And I hope we spare a thought for his wife Barbara, now that Mike has joined the great peloton of the sky. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. I really appreciate you, those comments and you bringing that forward. Mike, you know, you look at some of the things that we've been able to do for cycling all across the city, you know, the creation of Bike St. Louis and all of that. And people look at it and they say, "Okay, you guys created Bike St. Louis." No, we came up with an idea. Folks like Mike that went out and rode every route, showed up at every meeting, worked to make sure that we had everything we needed to make these things whole. So I know that I will miss him also. He was a good person. He was always consistent, no matter when you see him. He gave me a lot of good advice over the years also. We also had another passing that I wanted to have the Board of Aldermen, if you guys would all join me in a moment of silence, for Mike Murray. And also for the mother of pastor Sammy Jones. She passed away this week also, so if you guys would stand and join us, a moment of silence for the passing of Reverend Sammy Jones. And also the mother of Senator Nashid. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 4th.
Mr. President, members of the board, please don't forget that we have the Board of Education here today to explain to us and lunch is being provided for us today right here in the chamber, immediately after the session.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 15th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. The Alderman from the 4th and I, I think, are united in wanting to put what has been going on behind us. And so as with my sincere apologies, I would like to reach an olive branch to the Alderman of the 4th Ward in that it was never my intent to to do anything that would hurt him, defame him, any of that.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, first I'd like to say that come Monday, we are going to open the Gate, uh, St. Louis Community Gateway National Credit Union. And it is a combination of credit union and Gateway Bank, which was the first and only black bank in the state of Missouri. And it closed a number of years ago, and we were sad because we, at one point, African-American community had both a black credit union and a black bank. And Gateway was significant for me when I was in the Alderwoman of the 20th Ward, because it was my first place I had an account. And it also was the home to Mr. Gates at the time. And many black, middle-class people who could not at the time move anyplace because of segregation and restrictive covenant laws in the city of St. Louis. And so we were very saddened to lose that history of a bank. And so Monday, we're going to do the ribbon cutting for the new bank, and they have incorporated the history of Gateway and kept that as part of the name. In another week or so, the bank will be opening, and people are very anxious, or rather, the credit union. And people are very anxious about that, because for years, they've opened up all over every place else, but there was not a credit union in North St. Louis, so the Kingsway West Neighborhood School was another first, because we had a first new school, a first new bank, another new bank, first new strip mall. We've done a number of things over there as we continue our quest to make Union and Natural Bridge a place not only for the people who live in the 1st Ward, but many wards in North St. Louis where they have to go to shops and snooks close down for other stores. So it is a place for the 22nd Ward, it's a place for the 1st Ward. The 3rd would have to either come down to Natural Bridge. I'd guess the 5th goes over to Lendo, maybe. The 4th, so it is a place that a lot of people do business, so as, that has always been my passion to make sure that Natural Bridge and Union would look something similar to what Chippewa does in South St. Louis. So I just want to say how grateful I am for Gateway Credit Union, St. Louis Credit Union Gateway to be opening, having their grand opening Monday. And I want to tell everybody, I'm so sorry, it's only by invitation, so I can't invite you, or I would, okay? The Alderman from the 4th asks, is everyone invited? But you will be invited to come the next Monday to open up a brand-new account. And we're going to be working with the Treasurers Office and other people, because credit unions don't require a lot of money. And one of the things that we want to do is, we want to stop some of this payday loan and all these predatory lending kind of things. And so we encourage people, you know, for as little to $5 to $10, you can open up an account, and you can learn how to have financial responsibility as far as how you do your banking, instead of paying money to cash checks or to pay money to to buy money orders, you can have a checking account and you can become a financially literate person. So I think it's a great thing, and it adds another financial institution in our community, and that's always a great thing. The other thing I want to say is that I want to thank the Alderwoman from the 15th for her apology. And I support her on it, even though I differ with her on it, because I didn't think she had anything to apologize for. And I am going to be handing out something in a few minutes, that's a history of the Board of Aldermen, about the things that men have said very much similar and worse than what she said, and nobody has thought to. In fact, when one of the Aldermen from the 22nd cursed women out on this floor, they're opposed to...
Please, 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 please state your point of order, Alderman.
Mr. President, I, these are for community announcements at the end of the meeting. We've had a discussion regarding how to use the announcement section of our agenda several years ago. And it's perfectly fine to have an announcement, but to go ahead and begin preaching or lecturing to us during this time of our meeting, unless we want to go ahead and fully begin debating an issue, it's completely inappropriate.
Yeah. I would agree. Point of order well taken. Alderman from the 1st, you can proceed, but, 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 hold on a second. But, uh, but keep your comments and discussions on an announcement. Not on any...
First of all, I was replying to...
Pending business is during, the pending business, we still have pending business related to the thing that you're bringing up, so so if you want to talk about other things, please proceed.
I was replying to something that you allowed, I would not have said it except for that it occurred here, so I was replying to that. If you open the door, then I will follow it. If you don't open the door, I wouldn't. So the only thing I'm making the announcement is that this is going to be passed out, and when you read it, you will be appalled at the things that the men have done on this floor, the Board of Aldermen, and not ask for signature.
Alderman from the...
I'm done.
Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Very quickly, I wanted to remind us that this is the last weekend for the Cassius Clay Play at the History Museum. It tells the young story of Muhammad Ali and his relationship with a police officer that introduced him to boxing. We also have a number of Black History events that are taking place. South Side Wellness Center, of course, is doing theirs today at the Center on Park Avenue. And it will have an honorable tribute to Reverend W.J. Daniels and Tony Simpson, I'm sorry, who was one of our great musicians in our town. We'll also have a lunch that will be served, and any Alderman that have the ability, if you could just stop by, even for just a few minutes. Also, we have another history program at Harris Stell on Monday, February 29th at 6:30. And the keynote speakers are, is rather, Bishop Lester Woods, and that program is 6:30 to 8:30 on Monday. We have another wonderful groundbreaking that is going to take place on Monday for the Hope for Kids Mental Health Center. And for those who don't know, the Honorable, and she is honorable to me for all her work over the years in mental health, Dr. Amanda Murphy, is spearheading this endeavor, and the groundbreaking will take place at next to People's Health Center, 5700 Delmar. We also have the opportunity to have more than one entity in and outside of St. Louis that is going to give great attention to the graffiti problems that we have in the city. And I will be announcing next weekend the opportunities that will take place in the spring and summer. And hopefully, we can transform those who are interested into having an art endeavor and/or at least not have criminal endeavors we're tagging. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This Sunday at 1:00 p.m. is the closing ceremony for Soldier's Memorial. Soldier's Memorial will be closing for two years to undergo a $30 million renovation and will then be run as a museum by the Missouri Historical Society. So come on out this Sunday and pay tribute to one of our great landmarks downtown for the closing of Soldier's Memorial. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 2nd and the 25th be excused for necessary absence.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 11th, any discussion?